Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled business meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Education for Monday, February 11th, 2013. We do want to wish our Chairman, Mr. Schu, safe travels as he's traveling and I will do my level best to preside over the meeting in a smooth and efficient manner, but if I should stumble, I know you guys won't hesitate to give me the needle a little bit. So I'm fully expecting that. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. And Ms. Monroe, do I need to keep track of that or will you just ask me if... Okay. Well, we have adopted the agenda. We now will have the color guard do the presentation of colors. And I'd like to welcome from Central Cabarrus High School, JROTC, Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Cory Smith, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Bailey Rossman, Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Joy LaCarta, Cadet 1st Lieutenant Chris Bonham.
Color guard. Hold. Led. Thanks. Present. Colors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Cadet 1st Lieutenant Chris Bonim. And I apologize, he was the left guardsman in that, in our color guard. So I'd also like to recognize one of our school resource officers who's here with us tonight, Andrew Thousand from Mount Pleasant Middle.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for being here and thank you for all your service and work at Mount Pleasant.
all.
Order.
Okay.
Colors?
And we'll move on to 4.1, recognitions.
Close. Order. Arms. Right flank. Arch.
And I'd like to call Ms. Ronnie Boone, our Director of Public Relations, to the podium.
Good evening. Tonight, we will be presenting Impact Through Education awards to students and staff at WR Odell Elementary School and Cox Mill High School. Before we begin, I want to say a word of thanks to our sponsor for these awards, Concord Printing. Cabarrus County Schools appreciates the generosity of Mr. Palmer and his firm. We thank them for allowing us the opportunity to recognize deserving students and staff members with these awards each month. And now, on to these awards. We'll begin with WR Odell Elementary School, and I'd like to invite any members of the school's administrative team to please come and stand with their students and staff. Our first honoree from Odell Elementary School is Anushka Deshmukh. Would Anushka and her family please come forward?
Anushka is a 5th grade AIG student at WR Odell Elementary. She's a straight A student and is involved in numerous clubs within the school. She participates in Battle of the Books, is a member of the Student Action Team, and serves as a member of Odell's daily broadcasting team. In her spare time, Anushka is involved in gymnastics and loves to read. She also enjoys playing with her little brother. Her friends and teachers describe her as a friendly, outgoing person who is an excellent role model for others. Congratulations for being named an Impact Through Education Award winner.
Would Ryan and his family please come forward?
Ryan is also a 5th grader at WR Odell Elementary. He attends Pitts Baptist Church where he is involved in the Awana program. He loves to play sports, playing soccer and basketball. This spring, he will be adding baseball to his repertoire. At school, Ryan is involved in the Student Action Team. He was responsible for raising and lowering the flag daily. He has been working on a community project to raise money to help buy a tent for missionaries in Africa. Ryan is a member of the Duke TIP program and is currently on the A Honor Roll. He conducts himself as a role model for fellow students and is respectful of his classmates and his teachers. Congratulations, Ryan, for being selected an Impact Through Education Award winner. [applause]
The next honoree from Odell Elementary School is Ms. Kimberly Martin. Would Ms. Martin and her family please come forward?
Kimberly is described as the Energizer Bunny of WR Odell Elementary School. Here are a few reasons why. She's in her 11th year teaching at Odell Elementary School. She's taught kindergarten, 2nd grade, and 3rd grade. She's been grade level chair for 3rd grade for the past 3 years, lead mentor for WR Odell, and a gold team chair on the math committee for the past 2 years. Kimberly brought the Girls on the Run program to Odell in 2011 and served as the head coach during the fall 2011 and 2012 seasons. She was also on the yearbook committee for 6 years and was the Greater Cabarrus Reading Association representative for the school, as well as the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation representative for the school for 3 years. Kimberly holds degrees in psychology and elementary education from Shenandoah University in Virginia. She also holds a North Carolina Teaching License for grades K through 6. She also has an add-on licensure for academically and intellectually gifted from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, and a Master of Arts in Education and Curriculum and Instruction. She has been married for 26 years and has a 17-year-old daughter and a 16-year-old son. Before teaching, she was a stay-at-home mom for 8 years. Kimberly worked for EDS, which is now HP, in Herndon, Virginia before, during, and after college for 5 years. Before college, she served in the U.S. Army for 4 years. She's a busy lady. She enjoys reading, running, yoga, and spending time with family and friends. Her colleagues say she's always willing to take the leadership role in school activities and is continually looking for innovative ways to teach her students. Congratulations on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Odell Elementary School. [applause]
And our final honoree from Odell Elementary School this evening is Ms. Yvonne Martin. Would Ms. Martin and her family please come forward?
Yvonne Martin's roots run deep in Cabarrus County Schools. Her mom and dad both graduated from WR Odell. She attended Odell through the 8th grade, and both of her daughters attended Odell through the 5th grade. Yvonne has been employed with Cabarrus County Schools for 23 years as an assistant teacher. In that time, she has made a positive impact on each and every child that she has come in contact with. All of Yvonne's years at Odell have been dedicated to kindergarten. She had a wonderful mentor, Gay Hopkins, who always said, "You either love kindergarten or you don't." In Yvonne's words, "I love the kindergarten children because they are little sponges ready to absorb everything you expose them to." Yvonne has also worked as a secretary in the emergency department at Carolina's healthcare system for the past 13 years. In her spare time, she enjoys many adventures with her 2 daughters, her 9-year-old granddaughter and her 4-year-old grandson, her brother, his wife, and his 2 children. According to Yvonne, her family and all the children that have touched her life at Odell School mean the world to her and have enriched her life. Congratulations on receiving the Impact Through Education Award. [applause]
Next, we'll honor students and staff from Cox Mill High School. And I'd like to invite any members of the Cox Mill High School administrative team to please come forward to stand with their students and staff. Our first honoree this evening from Cox Mill High School is Diron Chloe. Would Diron and his family please come forward?
Diron is a senior at Cox Mill High School. He is the model student athlete. He is a quiet leader who truly leads by example. Coach Newendorf shares, "Diron is the most dedicated student athlete I have ever had the opportunity to work with in my career." He has excelled in the classroom and on the football field while at Cox Mill High School. In addition to being selected to the all-conference team his junior and senior years in football, he is a member of the National Honor Society, has been invited to participate in the Governor's School Program, and was recognized as an outstanding student by Charlotte's 100 Black Men Organization. Diron's hard work in the classroom and on the football field has been rewarded with offers to attend and play football at both Davidson College and Mercer University. Congratulations, Diron, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Cox Mill High. [applause]
Our next honoree from Cox Mill High School is Erica Reiner. Would Erica and her family please come forward?
Erica is also a senior at Cox Mill High. She has been a member of the yearbook staff for the past 4 years. Mrs. Campbell shares, "She has been invaluable to the yearbook this year. I have rarely met a student who enjoys helping her peers as much as she does. She has given her peers rides to sell yearbook ads, made them gifts for the holidays, and put her assignments to the side in order to help them." Cox Mill office staff also have the pleasure of working with Erica while she serves as an office assistant this year. They say, "We all know that when Erica is working on a task for us, she will complete it with as much care and dedication as she would any class assignment." In addition to all of the mentioned qualities, Erica is also described as a wonderful, conscientious student who excels in her studies. Congratulations, Erica, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award. [applause]
Our next honoree from Cox Mill High School is Heather Wilson. Would Mrs. Wilson and her family please come forward?
Heather Wilson is a superior teacher. When you walk into her classroom, you will always find students actively engaged in creative lessons. Her students truly benefit from the wonderful activities and class climate she creates. Mrs. Wilson also serves as the school's leadership teacher. Her hard work and long hours play an instrumental role in creating school spirit at Cox Mill, from planning homecoming celebrations and three-school dances each year to the Mr. Cox Mill pageant. Mrs. Wilson's work with her leadership class provides Cox Mill students wonderful extracurricular activities. Her impact extends to her department as well, as she does a great job serving as co-chair of the Social Studies Department. Congratulations, Ms. Wilson, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Cox Mill High. [applause]
And our final honoree this evening from Cox Mill High School is Ms. Carol Lee Waltrip. Would Ms. Waltrip and her family please come forward?
Mrs. Waltrip wears many hats at Cox Mill High School. As testing coordinator, she does a great job planning the administration of the EOCs and other state and national tests. Each morning, Mrs. Waltrip welcomes substitute teachers and makes sure they have the information they need to be successful in the classrooms. Mrs. Waltrip creates a friendly atmosphere in the main office each afternoon as she covers the office after dismissal. Her wonderful humor and friendliness is shown with all students and staff. Mrs. Waltrip helps Cox Mill students and staff in so many other ways that the list is too long to mention. Let's just say, she has truly made an impact throughout Cox Mill High School, and we congratulate her on receiving the Impact Through Education Award. [applause]
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Boone, and congratulations to all of our Impact Through Education winners. We'll now move on to 4.2, our Hillbush Teacher of the Month Award. We'll ask Mr. Tim Vaughn and Dr. Barry Shepherd and Ms. Auger to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for Cabarrus County Schools. As always, Mr. Vaughn, we appreciate Hillbush Ford's generosity, and we thank you for saluting one of our wonderful teachers each month. The Cabarrus County School Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for February 2013 is Elaine Johnson. Ms. Johnson, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team please come forward?
Elaine Johnson is a 1st grade teacher at Pitts School Road Elementary School. She was nominated for this award by a parent who wrote in her nomination. "I feel Mrs. Johnson well deserves this award because she is patient, understanding, and she has a passion to teach children. I love that my son comes home and speaks so highly and positively of her on a daily basis. I also love the encouragement and support she gives me about my son to help him succeed." She continues, "I feel she believes in each one of her students and wants them to excel and master their goals. Mrs. Johnson believes in being fair to her students and in giving them a chance to make the right decision. I already believe that she's a winner, even if she isn't chosen for this award. She's a winner because she's made a difference in my son's life. She's the best."
Mrs. Johnson pleased to accept our congratulations and thanks. We're honored to have you as a part of the Cabarrus County Schools' family. Before you're seated, please allow our board members to congratulate you all, so.
Okay. And we'll move along to 4.3, North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics Outstanding Secondary Math Teacher Award. And we will again welcome Ms. Auger.
Thank you. I'm pleased tonight to recognize another of our outstanding teachers who's doing great work in the classroom. Would Ms. April Wengler and her family and any members of her school's administrative team please come forward?
April is a math teacher at Hickory Ridge Middle School. Last fall, she was selected as the Outstanding Secondary Mathematics Teacher for Cabarrus County by the North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics, which is the professional organization in the state for all persons responsible for the teaching of mathematics. Its membership includes teachers from all levels, kindergarten through graduate school, and other professionals who work with curriculum and materials for the teaching of mathematics. The council asks principals to nominate the teacher at his or her school whom they believe does the most effective job teaching mathematics in their school. From those nominated, each LEA selected one teacher to represent the best in mathematics teaching from the entire system. Last fall, April, along with teachers from across the state, was honored at the council's annual meeting in Greensboro. Ms. Wengler, we congratulate you on achieving this award, and thank you for working to ensure that your students are receiving the best mathematics instruction possible. Please accept this token of appreciation from the council and allow our board members to thank you individual. [applause]
Okay, board members, we're going to move on to 5.1, Approval of the Minutes from January 7th, 2013 Work Session in the January 14th, 2013 Business Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, and we will move on to Item 6, Reports. And the current vice chair has no comments, so we will move on to the superintendent's comments from Dr. Barry Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'm sure by now that everyone knows that our makeup day, well, for our snow day that we missed will be next Monday, February 18th. I just want to remind everyone that we're required by state law to make up any school days missed due to inclement weather. And we selected February 18th so that we could preserve the spring break holiday later in April. We understand that families and staff members may have conflicts with the makeup day on February 18th, and we'll be flexible with those who have legitimate conflicts. I would also say that, as you and other board members know, Cabarrus County Schools is committed to educating the whole child, and to that end, we have placed a renewed emphasis on our Fine Arts program. Last fall, we placed Ms. Ann Burr in the role of Director of Fine Arts for our district, and since that time, she's been busy working with our community and with our Fine Arts teachers and principals to develop new programs and expand existing opportunities for our students. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that the Cabarrus County Schools will pilot a dance program for the 2013-2014 school year at Cox Mill High School. Additionally, students enrolled at Harris Road Middle School will have opportunities to participate in the dance program at Cox Mill through extracurricular activities. Next school year, we will also expand our band programs to include 6th grade students at all of our middle schools. The band program will teach instruments such as the flute, clarinet, trumpet, and trumpet. Elaine Johnson is a first-grade teacher at Pitt School Road Elementary School. She was nominated for this award by a parent who wrote in her nomination, "I feel Mrs. Johnson well deserves this award because she is patient, understanding, and she has a passion to teach children. I love that my son comes home and speaks so highly and positively of her on a daily basis. I also love the encouragement and support she gives me about my son to help him succeed." She continues, "I feel she believes in each one of her students and wants them to excel and master their goals. Mrs. Johnson believes in being fair to her students and in giving them a chance to make the right decision. I already believe that she's a winner, even if she isn't chosen for this award. She's a winner because she's made a difference in my son's life. She's the best." Mrs. Johnson, please accept our congratulations and thanks. We're honored to have you as a part of the Cabarrus County Schools' family. Before you're seated, please allow our board members to congratulate you also.
Okay, and we'll move along to 4.3, North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics: Outstanding Secondary Math Teacher Award, and we will again welcome Ms. Augur.
Thank you. I'm pleased tonight to recognize another of our outstanding teachers who's doing great work in the classroom. Would Ms. April Wengler and her family and any members of her school's administrative team please come forward? April is a math teacher at Hickory Ridge Middle School. Last fall, she was selected as the Outstanding Secondary Mathematics Teacher for Cabarrus County by the North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics, which is the professional organization in the state for all persons responsible for the teaching of mathematics. Its membership includes teachers from all levels, kindergarten through graduate school, and other professionals who work with curriculum and materials for the teaching of mathematics. The council asks principals to nominate the teacher at his or her school whom they believe does the most effective job teaching mathematics in their school. From those nominated, each LEA selected one teacher to represent the best in mathematics teaching from the entire system. Last fall, April, along with teachers from across the state, was honored at the council's annual meeting in Greensboro. Ms. Wengler, we congratulate you on achieving this award, and thank you for working to ensure that your students are receiving the best mathematics instruction possible. Please accept this token of appreciation from the council and allow our board members to thank you individually.
Okay, board members, we're going to move on to 5.1, Approval of the Minutes from January 7th, 2013 Work Session in the January 14th, 2013 Business Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Oh, second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, and we will move on to Item 6, Reports, and the current vice chair has no comments, so we will move on to the superintendent's comments from Dr. Barry Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'm sure by now that everyone knows that our makeup day, well, for our snow day that we missed, will be next Monday, February the 18th. I just want to remind everyone that we're required by state law to make up any school days missed due to inclement weather, and we selected February the 18th so that we could preserve the spring break holiday later in April. We understand that families and staff members may have conflicts with the makeup day on February the 18th, and will be flexible with those who have legitimate conflicts. I would also say that, as you and other board members know, Cabarrus County Schools is committed to educating the whole child, and to that end, we have placed a renewed emphasis on our Fine Arts program. Last fall, we placed Ms. Ann Burr in the role of Director of Fine Arts for our district, and since that time, she's been busy working with our community and with our Fine Arts teachers and principals to develop new programs and expand existing opportunities for our students. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that the Cabarrus County Schools will pilot a dance program for the 2013-2014 school year at Cox Mill High School. Additionally, students enrolled at Harris Road Middle School will have opportunities to participate in the dance program at Cox Mill through extracurricular activities. Next school year, we will also expand our band programs to include 6th grade students at all of our middle schools. The band program will teach instruments such as the flute, clarinet, trumpet, and trombone. Offering the band program to younger students will help to spur their interest in band and music at an earlier age and offer those students additional training time throughout their middle school years. Also tonight, I want to say a few words about school security. We've received many inquiries over the past weeks and months regarding Cabarrus County Schools' security program in the wake of the Connecticut school shootings. I want to assure our viewing audience that we are committed to ensuring our students have a safe environment in which to learn. Our emphasis on school security, though, is not new. Cabarrus County Schools has always made safety and security a priority. Some of you may be aware of the immediate improvements we've made, such as installing buzzer, buzz-to-enter phone systems at our schools, or reinforcing existing security and access procedures, reminding front-office personnel of the need to check picture IDs. There's also a strategic effort underway, as all the things I've mentioned. We've established a security review team, and that work has, they've begun work on our guiding principles to define safety and security. These values can be used to guide security decision-making. Now, this concept may sound familiar to some of you as it's similar to the TRIGO decision-making process that we're using for our prioritizing budget items. There's an outline of security features in Cabarrus County Schools, along with strengths and barriers of each. However, security experts warn against knee-jerk reactions to every suggested improvement, including the purchase of new security equipment. Instead, they suggest a more common-sense approach, that includes reinforcement of security protocols for school operations above everything else, and we believe that we're doing just that. And last this week, this is, this week is North Carolina School Bus Driver Appreciation Week. Cabarrus County Schools is proud of the men and women who safely transport our students to and from school each day, and we're proud that you are a part of the Cabarrus County Schools' family, and appreciate your dedication and service to our students. Activities celebrating our bus drivers are planned throughout the week, and Buster, the talking school bus, will be visiting our youngest students throughout the week. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, for the opportunity to make this report.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. I guess I would be remiss if I didn't admit that I did not know we had a talking bus. So, I'm glad to know we're getting some use out of that. We can now move on to Section 7, Guest Speakers, and as a general reminder, any citizen of, can address the board during a regularly scheduled business meeting if they notify the board clerk by noon on Friday, and we welcome all guests to our meetings to speak, provided they meet that criteria. We have several people that have asked to speak tonight, and we're going to move forward with that. If you are speaking on behalf of yourself, you get three minutes, and there's a clock and a timer, and Ms. Monroe's our clock timer, our timekeeper. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you're allotted five minutes. So, we will look forward to hearing from you all, and we, first up, will be Ms. Jennifer Smith. Is Ms. Smith here? Okay, just come on to the podium, and we're glad to have you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Smith, and I have a student in 2nd grade at Royal Oaks Elementary School. I would like to thank each and every one of you for all you have done for our students and faculty in Cabarrus County, but we still feel the need that Royal Oaks is continually being left behind. I appreciate you coming here to help us solve these problems and issues that we're bringing to your attention tonight. Royal Oaks Administration has implemented many safety procedures this year, but we still have a long way to go to keep our students safe, and this is why we are asking for your help. In the last 64 years, Royal Oaks Elementary School has had numerous issues with termites, black mold, and asbestos. These issues are not acceptable for children to be breathing in or constantly exposed to. We have over 40 asthma and inhaler students at Royal Oaks, and these children, teachers, and staff members should not have to breathe in these types of deadly toxins and poisons every day. We have 10-plus outbuildings that are not attached to the main building of the school. We also have outside bathrooms for the trailers and the 4th grade to use. These buildings are not safe. Anyone can access these bathrooms and trailers without going to the office first. There's no fence or barrier to keep the unwanted people from coming in, and also to keep the children safely in the confinement of the school property. In case of a tornado, a lockdown, or hurricane, the children in the cafeteria, trailers, library, and GM have no access to bathrooms or sinks where the doors to be locked with the children inside. We're petitioning for a new school, and we can use Royal Oaks Elementary School's new building as a green building project. We can show county leaders that Cabarrus County Schools know how to be green. We can recycle many items from the school: desks, chairs, smartboards, whiteboards, windows, doors, computers. The possibilities are endless. We can also sell old bricks to the public, like they did at Cannon Mills and Wyancoff Elementary School, as the buildings were being demolished. These sales will go to help with the building costs. I'm sure that we can put our heads together and plan ways to keep the building costs down while still providing a safer, healthier, and more energy-efficient way to keep our students and teachers safe. We think very highly of Royal Oaks Elementary School, as we know you do, so please help us to protect, support, and help our students and faculty to have a school building they can be proud of and one they deserve. Thank you for your time, and we really do appreciate all you do for Royal Oaks Elementary School now and in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Next to the podium, we'll have, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Smith. I'm looking, too many things up here to look at. Next, we'll have Ms. Jackie Davis.
Good evening. Once again, we would all like to thank you guys for helping our school to remain safe and all the additions that have been added. My name is Jacqueline Davis. I have a 5th grader at Royal Oaks Elementary School. I would also like to thank our parents that have come out to support our school this evening. Last but not least, I want to recognize and thank our past and our present administration. They have done all that they can do to ensure the safety of our children once they are on campus. But I speak to you tonight as a parent who is increasingly concerned with the plot of the structure of our building. Many parents, including myself, are very worried about our kids' safety once they're on campus, as far as the structure is concerned. Our staff and teachers do all they possibly can to keep our kids safe. Kids are now sent from one building to another with an adult with a key to unlock each entrance. All entrances are now being locked. However, once again, our concern is with the structure itself. Our campus is made up of multiple buildings and trailers that are in bad shape. Our main building has had asbestos, and the conditions of the trailers are increasingly worse. A walk around our campus would show sunken floors and doors that can be easily pushed open that are in the trailers, exposed wires and pipes, P.A. systems that are not usable, and the ever-growing algae that covers our trailers on the outside. Outdoor restrooms are unlocked, and our campus lies wide open, as mentioned before, with no fences. It is easily accessible to the numerous sexual predators that line the streets of the Royal Oaks community. Five years before Sandy Hook, we had the Sun Drop shooting, which forced our school into lockdown on the very last day of school in June 2007. During that summer, our school was wired for a buzz-in or airphone system. After the Sandy Hook tragedy, however, five years later, that airphone system was finally completed. After looking through documents on the Cabarrus County webpage, we have found numerous occasions where our school was up for replacement or renovations. We are unsure as to why these were never completed or addressed. We have had many visits on campus to review and examine the state of our school, but still, we do not feel like our school is a priority. The simple question in the minds of our parents is, why? Why have we not been put, why have we increasingly been put on the back burner? We simply ask that you uphold what you have written in your school board policy manual in, as far as Code 9000, where it says that the board will adopt a long-range plan that identifies the facility needs of the school system. The plan will address whether to renovate existing facilities or build new facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Next to the podium, we'll have Ms. Wendy Harrison.
Mr. Shepherd and Board of Education members, my name is Wendy Klutz-Harrison. I am a proud parent of a child at Royal Oaks Elementary School. I am a lifelong resident of Cabarrus County and was educated at Royal Oaks 36 years ago. My ancestors have been in public schools in Cabarrus County as long as Cabarrus County has been in existence. Five of my cousins and I went to Royal Oaks K-6. We were taught by some of the best teachers in the county. I feel certain that even after 36 years, Royal Oaks continues to have great teachers, staff, and administration that work within the constraints of the funds and supplies given. Below are some points of interest I'd like to go over with you. Royal Oaks was built in 1949. It is 64 years old. It sits on 17.6 acres of land. According to the North Carolina Department of Instruction on School Planning, acreage needed to build an elementary school is 10 acres plus 1 acre per 100 students. We currently have 369 students, but we are at 120% capacity. Student population of this year is 40% white, 30% African-American, 20% Hispanic, 1% American Indian, 1% Asian, and 8% multiracial. 84% of those students qualify for free reduced lunch. Royal Oaks showed an overall growth in math and reading than any Cabarrus County school in 2012. We also were the home of Teacher of the Year 2011. There's not enough room to have a school gathering for all of our students or families in one place as it's due to fire codes. The GM, cafeteria, library are all too small for large groups of students and families. Security. Royal Oaks is comprised of approximately 10 separate buildings and large playground areas. Most buildings are attached only by a covered walkway. At present, all doors remain locked, and only one, one can only gain access by a manual key. The front door, which is the buzz-in camera system that just got finished after it was begun two years ago, is still not secure. People are buzzed in, they go by classrooms to get to the office to sign in. There's also not enough staff to support the system, as office personnel is often pulled away to help children to go from one building to the next. Another concern is the playground. There have been times where children have wandered into the woods or tried to cross the road. As a minimum, fencing around this perimeter needs to be placed as to deter predators and keep the children in a safe boundary, as there are 128 registered sex offenders within five miles of Royal Oaks Elementary. Another needed safety aide would be a school resource officer. As an immediate need, Sheriff Brad Riley can provide Royal Oaks a full-time resource officer for 37, 8 a year. Once funds allocated, Royal Oaks could have an officer within two weeks. Feel free to call Sheriff Riley, as we have talked quite often about this case. In response to the Independent Tribune article, "Cabarrus Moves to Tighten School Security" from February 6, 2013, we did not have an officer present at Royal Oaks after the Sandy Hook shooting. Matter of fact, since my daughter's been at Royal Oaks for the past four years, I have not seen an officer at the school until several weeks ago, when we began writing about security of the school. The officer I saw and spoke with was only there to talk about the DARE program for the 5th graders. Replacement of Royal Oaks Elementary. Royal Oaks School has, was on the five-year plan to be replaced in 2013, according to the budget presentation March 22, 2012. However, renovations and additions at other schools have put replacement on hold. According to the Board of Education meeting September 21, 2012, Royal Oaks is number five in line for addition, an addition, on capital funds request and on facilities for almost $1 million in repairs, which would include plumbing, electrical, and window replacements, which will require asbestos abatement. This is a personal concern, as my daughter has had a continual cough the last year and a half since being in the main building of the school that was built 64 years ago. She was recently diagnosed with asthma, and I do not want this to continue to affect her health or anyone else's. We were told two years ago that Royal Oaks was being replaced pending approval of Cabarrus County Commissioners. Some of you even came and walked the buildings and the campus. Royal Oaks has continued to be pushed aside and put on the back burner for replacement. No land would be needed to purchase for a new school, as Royal Oaks already sits on 17.6 acres. Repairs include electrical, plumbing, windows. This money can be used, put toward a new school. We, the school and community, have come together and painted walls, rooms, and hallways, landscaped poorly-kept shrubs, bushes, and commoneries. We have shown we care about Royal Oaks. We have got to put these children's safety and security at the top of the list. We hope you will take our concerns into consideration and put yourself in our place as parents. Many of these children have no one to speak up for them, and they are our future. You, as a school board, are stewards of the funds that can make a difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Next to the mic, or to the podium, will be Mr. Mike Lucenti.
I'm not good at speaking, but the splash program, do we really need it? Sorry. We don't need to waste the money on that. Put the money near school. I mean, really, we're going to waste all that for a country that we're supposed to be speaking English? Heck, I'm not good at speaking English. But we need to learn more English, not Spanish. That's pretty much all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Lucenti. Next to the podium, we'd like to welcome Denver Walker. Not here? Okay. Alinda Walker. Okay, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Mr. Superintendent and Board members, I'm Alinda Walker. I reside at 10,000 Mount Pleasant Road in Midland, North Carolina. I'm very concerned that this splash program is not what Mr. Van Hookleman has lavishly presented. In February of 2012, this board was told that within the state of North Carolina, 19 school districts were utilizing the strat splash program, and when they moved to other areas that were not utilizing it, they were behind their peers in English. That is just direct opposition to what Mr. Hookleman's release, news release stated. Who is the VIF and who is funding them? You have a Title III federal grant for the Spanish part of this program. However, the taxpayer will have to pick up the Chinese program at $59,000. From what I understand, it's a done deal. How does hiring teachers from outside the country without any input from the people of Cabarrus County comply with Section 2 and Section 14 of the State of North Carolina's Constitution? Who pays for the program when it extends to other schools? You are replacing qualified American teachers here with internationals. I fear that the American teaching will go the way of the United, UN, the North Carolina industry, that is, to China. Follow the money trail. Who is truly benefiting from this program? I will assure you that it will not be American education. There are those internationally who want America to collapse economically. The educational system is one other way to accomplish that goal. Educators in the field of higher education complain about the quality of students entering university systems who cannot write coherently, comprehend what they read, and whose vocabulary is abhorrently poor. If this program is to promote academic achievement and enrichment rather than remediation, why are we promoting these goals, all along with educational process? America is lagging behind other nations in math, science, and reading, and it's getting worse. We must educate our children in the three Rs and keep them at or above grade level to have a quality school system. More families are facing stresses of lost jobs. There will be more children at risk, and there will be less quality time for parent and child interaction to work on skills, homework, and strengthening life skills. When I was called, when I called to inform Mrs. Monroe that I had others that wished to talk, I was asked what qualifications gave me the right to talk? Was I an individual, or was I a group? Citizenship in Cabarrus County and being a taxpayer is all the requirements that are required to address this board. I worked very hard to replace many of you on this board in this last election. I am incensed that there are board members here tonight that will not think for themselves and do what is right for the individual and majority of these schools' children. Members of this board who vote to get along is not what will improve education. The actions of this board, from our, the action of this board will be followed by many of the people, and we will know where you deviate from our state constitution in all matters. You are voted in by the people of this community. It is our second amendment right to be heard. Your announcement in the Tribune, coming out on Friday with a noon deadline and a public meeting on Monday, shows you're trying to circumvent the public input. We have a right to be heard on all issues that are important, and I thank you for this time.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Next to the podium, I'd like to invite Kathy Lucenti.
Hello. My name is Kathy. I'm here to express my concerns toward this splash program. I was here last year talking about it, and I... I was here last year talking about it, and I opposed it last year. But the reason why I'm here today, as I am a parent of a six-year-old and a two-and-a-half year-old, and when I walked out of here, I had so many people give me hugs, shake my hand, and say, "Thank you for talking, for saving my job." And I realized this is bigger than what I originally thought. We're losing, we're giving jobs to foreigners of teachers that really want to be here, that really want to work. I have a teacher that drives from Charlotte every day to Concord because she loves her job. She's a kindergarten teacher. Is she going to be one that, she's going to let go or relocate? And there's really no other place for them to relocate at. There's no other opportunities for them if they are let go because of the splash program. Sorry, I'm very nervous. Also, I have a friend that is from Mexico, and I was talking to her about the splash program. I was asking her questions about how long it took her to learn English. And what she told me is it was not as long as she thought. It was because she's around English all the time. Well, from what I'm gathering about the splash program, it's going to be for half a day Spanish, half a day English. That's, I don't understand how they can learn English in that little time because when they come home to me as a parent, I wouldn't know how to, I wouldn't know how to answer their questions. I wouldn't know how to direct my daughter where to go from there. As a parent, I want to be able to sit down with her, talk to her, teach her stuff as a parent. There's no way if she's in this program that I can sit down and teach her anything because I don't know Spanish. And we live in America. I don't think I should know Spanish. If, if parents want to have their kids to know Spanish, they need to go to a charter school. I don't need to have my tax money go to this program. Every, I read in the paper that this was voluntary. Yeah, it's voluntary for me to put my daughter in this splash program, but it's not voluntary for my taxes to go to this program. I do not want my daughter in this program, but I'm still going to pay for the books. I'm still going to pay for the teachers. I didn't volunteer to let go of the teachers either. I didn't volunteer for any of this. Sorry. And also, last year when I was here in February, almost everybody on the school board said no to this. Some of them were a little iffy about it. But the one that I remember, she stated that when she was looking into this, that the kids that went to another school, they were behind on their work because of this program. And I'm kind of just, I wish she was here today, but as far as I, oh, I'm up, as far as I know, that has not changed from what she said last year. So, again, that's all I have to say about it, but I do oppose this program, and please say no to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucenti. And I know the next speaker, and I don't see him. Ms. Ronnie here?
Hi.
Okay. So, we will invite Dr. Odie Crisp to the podium. Dr. Crisp.
Good evening. I'm addressing the board and the rest, and the superintendent, and I'm here to oppose, to let my voice known, to oppose the splash program. And I've asked to address you tonight because my comments come from personal and professional experiences. I can tell you in the long run, these kinds of programs do not achieve their promised results. Being from Germany, I, of course, was very interested in my children learning German so they could communicate with their grandparents. Eventually, I had to scuttle my efforts because their English skills were falling behind. Since they were going to live in America and keep up with other English-speaking students, I had to put their interest ahead of mine. My daughter-in-law, who grew up in Siberia, has had to make the same decision. As a teacher, I have seen the adverse long-term effects on students who were expected to learn English with proficiency in speaking, writing, and strategic thinking. I have had students in fifth-grade classes who were labeled retarded, but who, as it turned out, did not know the alphabet, could not spell, could not do math, and the textbooks, therefore, were just puzzles to them. And part of one of the results, too, was because they couldn't comprehend things, they would cause classroom disruptions. I was teaching a French class, and students came in that did not know English. So, again, because there was nothing for them to do, they caused disruptions, and it was disruptive to the other students because they could not learn. Sending them to the principal was not an option because it just didn't work. And several years ago, Duke University found that the majority of students who came to the journalism program could not and did not have command of the English language. They had to bring back basic English in order for the students to reach their goals, and that only has gotten worse. There are many organizations here in America who start their indoctrination with young children, knowing that once they have been indoctrinated, they will stay true to the values they have been taught. And I'm addressing this to the part that says that they're going to learn Chinese. Chinese as an indoctrination program? Yes. They learned this approach from Christian organizations, who, when it was impossible to get missionaries into China, would send English teachers to China to teach American history. And with that, they could teach Christianity because America was founded on Christian principles, and they are bringing the same thing back. And our government is indebted to China to the tune of one hundred million dollars of interest per day. So, China feels that they can set some of the rules, and this is just one part of coming in. And don't fool yourself that these Chinese teachers that are going to be imported will not have been taught what to say. In Toledo, Ohio, outside Toledo, Ohio, the Chinese government has just bought a huge amount of acreage to build their own Chinese city. They're importing Chinese people. They will speak Chinese, and they will obey the Chinese law. The city of Toledo has mostly, or has sold, or leased the airport to the Chinese. And on Friday, I learned that the Toledo, I guess, city has leased the harbor facilities on Lake Erie to China, and there are many other instances. So, they are buying our country, and they feel that they have a right to come in here.
Dr. Crisp, thank you for your comments. Your, your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we will invite Missy Jones to the podium. Ms. Jones here?
For safety reasons, I'm going to use my other alias. It's Carlina Jones. I live in Mount Pleasant, and I taught at Mount Pleasant Elementary for thirty-two years. I don't think you'd find a person in this room that would be against our children or grandchildren learning a second language. However, I'm concerned that Cabarrus County has just implemented the Common Core Standards Curriculum for K-12. As one teacher told me last week, these are rigorous, intense academic standards. How can we expect our educators to take on more than all this at one time? Before voting for this program, I would strongly advise each individual school member to go to the schools in Union County where splash has been already implemented, talk with the K-1 teachers, parents, ask if they think it's been practical to start this program along with what they have to accomplish with the core standards. I would also like to see the actual data and research that proves how valuable the splash program would be for our students. Funding from the federal government has strings attached, seems like always. No child left behind, race to the top. What happens when there's no longer any federal money? I personally would like the federal government to stay out of our state education system. Thank you for your attention, and please be reminded, this program was voted down seven to zero just last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Okay, board members, we're going to move on to Section Eight of our agenda, the approval of the consent agenda. These are items that we discussed last week, and by unanimous consent, put them on the consent agenda. Do we, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
Send me.
A second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Ms. Monroe, the consent agenda is approved six to zero. Mr. Walter, did you have a comment? Okay. Okay, now, we will move on to item number nine, our action agenda. Nine point one, approval of splash language immersion program. And we'll invite Mr. Jason Van Hugelman to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Ciger, members of the board. Last week, I was able to present to you a lot of the rationale, reasoning behind the adoption of the splash program at Fur Elementary School. And tonight, I have some guests with me from the Fur Elementary community. Darren, and along with members of his staff, are here in the audience, and we have some parents in the audience that are here that would like to voice their support for the splash program. So, at this time, I'm just going to ask three of those parents to come forward, Carrie Fazoli, April Mitchell, and Tom Lassiano, if they would come forward at this time to speak on behalf of their interest in the splash program.
Hi. My name is Carrie Fazoli. I'm the current PTO president at Fur. As a parent of three boys at Fur, I'm very excited for this opportunity for many reasons. We moved to Cabarrus County six years ago specifically for the schools, and I've never been disappointed. This is a great opportunity to add another program to our school and make it more attractive to other families as well, and to continue to bring other families into our county for the schools and the programs we can offer them. Another reason is this program offers a choice to rising kindergarten families. Adding a foreign language is important to a lot of families. This gives us families a chance to stay in our neighborhood schools and, and have a language introduced. We wouldn't need to look elsewhere anymore. The most important thing is, as parents, is we want to have options for our children and provide them with the best education possible. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's April Mitchell. I currently have a second grader at Fur, and I have a three-year-old who will be in kindergarten much too soon. Tonight, I don't bring with me statistics for the board, but I do stand before you tonight no different than any other parent in this room, in that I hope for my children's happiness and success in this world. I wholeheartedly believe the splash program presents a unique opportunity for my children to reach that success in their education. I, like you, want my children to have the best education possible, and it's exciting to know the splash program would expand the foundation of their education immediately, right from the start, introducing new skills and innovative ways to learn. Is it a little scary? Sure. Change always is. But I owe it, we owe it, to my children to think bigger and better than that. I know that my children and other children at Fur will benefit greatly from the splash program. I am certain they will find success in it, that they will carry with them their entire educational career and beyond. But first, we must give them access to this opportunity. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Lassiano. I have a fifth grader and a third grader, and next year, I will register my kindergarten student, and I do plan on registering them for the splash program. I want my children to learn the skills that are going to make them powerful and successful in a global economy. They will need this in high school. They will need this in college, and it will broaden their opportunities for careers outside. The other thing is, I want my children to be able to communicate with their peers, those that are around them. My daughter has friends that their family speaks Spanish, and she has more friends because of that opportunity. She has the ability to bridge those relations. I am in favor of this program, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
I don't have much more for the board. Got a lot of the information to you last week. Just want to kind of summarize some of those things. You know, in, in the right for students category, we have a lot of research that supports language immersion. You've seen that. Right for the community, we were reminded again in the paper that choice, choice is the driver for education for the foreseeable future. Our families want choice. Those families in particular that are entering the marketplace with rising kindergarteners, they are shopping for schools, and they want choice. And then, it's right for the future, referenced already tonight, preparing globally competitive students so that they can go and compete in the marketplace. At this time, I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Jason. And we've discussed this at the retreat and again last week, but we'll go through another round, and I'm going to start with Dr. Phillips.
Okay, well, I really don't have any questions. I'm in favor of this. Like it or not, we live in a global economy. You can say whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it is the real thing. It is the truth. When Fieldcrest Cannon shut down, what was it, eight years ago, laid off all those people in Cabarrus County, they didn't lose those jobs to Rowan County or Mecklenburg or Gastonia. They lost them to people overseas because it is a global economy. We have to make sure that our children are equipped to compete in global technol, economy. And one way to do that is to give them access to learning more than just English. But also, we need to make sure that everyone learns English, and that is the reason that I'm going to vote for this program because the data that we are seeing from the children at Fur that come from Hispanic homes is showing that we are not doing a good job of educating them in English. And to continue to do what we're doing would be a waste of taxpayer money. We must change. We must find a better way, and that's why I'm willing to try this. Pilot program. Everyone that will go into it will be voluntary, and we'll check it out after a year and see how well it's working, and then we'll make a decision. Do we want to broaden this out? Do we want to stop it? I hope it'll be a success because, again, we need to educate all our children and prepare them for a global economy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. We'll move on to Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Jason. Participatory democracy is a darn good thing, and I appreciate you all being here tonight speaking one way or the other about this program. My misgivings have been in the Chinese portion or component of the program, but there's no doubt in my mind, A, that language immersion works, and that the need for that program and the effectiveness of that program is paramount. It will help Cabarrus County a great deal to have Spanish immersion programs within our school system. I would caution that the participation in this program be clarified because in much of the material we have, there's quite a lot of emphasis on English as a second language being the category of students who would participate in this program as opposed to other classifications that do not fall in ESL categories. And that would be very instructive to the population of Cabarrus County to understand who qualifies for this program. I'm about ninety percent in favor of the splash program with some other misgivings, and I do hope the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect that this board should, in the future, reevaluate this program going forward. And I hope my peers on the board will allow the program, as Dr. Phillips says, in a pilot fashion, but not lose sight of the fact that we need to continually observe the effectiveness of the program. Thank you. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter.
Just can you address again the issue about teachers and the jobs there? Yeah. So, at no time will any teachers lose their job for the, for the splash program. You know, initially, on the first year in particular, we have the influx of students coming from Cox Mill Elementary School, so we will be hiring additional staff at Fur Elementary this particular year, but then through the course, we have regular attrition that will happen at Fur Elementary School, and that's how we will handle the expansion of just one teacher per year, one extra, one VIF teacher per year. Correct.
Okay, and my, my perspective comes again from the parents, parents' perspective in having choices and options, and being that it is voluntary if, if you don't want your children... choices and options, and being that it is voluntary. If you don't want your child to participate, they don't have to participate. And it was a school-driven concept. It wasn't, didn't come down from us. It came from the school. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter?
No, I'm gonna have him. One of the things is, there's been things back and forth where the funding's actually coming from, because it was in the paper saying it was actually coming from Title III funds. That was actually stated in the paper. Email got back this afternoon, stated that teachers could not be paid for with Title III funds, so want clarification on this, because again, it was stated in the paper. People calling me saying, where's the funding coming from? Okay, can't come from Title III. So then that's saying it's coming from state funds, so want the clarification on this. Let you answer that question first, because again, got quite a few other things that need to come up, because do want clarification on some things.
So you have two major components of the Splash program. The first one is the personnel actually paying for a VIF teacher. Then you have the program support, which comes from visiting international faculty, the classroom supplies, materials, and the professional development that goes along with the program for both the VIF teacher and the Fur Elementary teacher that participates in the program. So the program support, all of those funds, comes from Title III. We have to, we will have seven approximately kindergarten classrooms at Fur Elementary, regardless of whether we have the Splash program. So the actual teaching position will be paid from out of the Fur Elementary regular allotment. They're not, they're not gonna receive any additional allotment. That is a cost neutral. We have to pay for that regardless.
We're going, that which will have to come from state funds, which we now all know are always sometime in jeopardy, so we're gonna have to come up with that with state funds. Again, today, been on the phone all day long, people have, like I say, been calling me, and one individual, and they know who they are, have been waiting for me to try to get back some numbers from them, and were waiting for me to call them. And again, you can't get data. Data's not available, basically, to say some of these schools, we're only looking at really, you know, I've heard numbers from, it's twelve schools. This Splash program has not been something that's really been, you know, it's not, you know, you wanna say, well, we've got forty schools doing it. Well, a lot of these are magnets. We're not comparing apples to apples. You've got magnet schools, you've got, you know, some of them doing full immersion, not immersion, but you know, when you read, originally said you've got other school districts across the state with Splash-supported language immersion. You wanted to say twenty-two, but if you look, it's districts. You had the count of schools, maybe a district had three schools, but there was actually twelve districts that had it. Well, then I started calling the districts. Well, they'd say, well, we've only been doing it maybe six months. We can't give you data. Then the ones that maybe could give me data, it wasn't complete data when I was looking, and what I was basically looking for, and you know where my concern is, was on the reading proficiency. And this is where my biggest concern is. When I've got a child that can't read, the three Rs are the main thing. We've gotta teach our children how to read. When I'm looking at Fur, and these parents back here on the back row that were, yay, give me the program, all right, that's fine, but when you've got thirty-four point one percent of the children in Fur that cannot read or not at grade level, it's my responsibility to make sure those children are at grade level. You're talking the children in kindergarten, this is where this program's gonna start. And then the children that are already past that point, we're saying, sorry, kids, that's that thirty-four point one percent that are not at grade level. That's where I'm concerned. What about those children? Now, he told me earlier, because last week, he told me, we're gonna send those ESL teachers away, but now he told me earlier, that's not gonna be the case. That worried me, because they need those ESL teachers, because they need to work with these children. But he said they were gonna let them stay there a little while longer, but you know, that's an extra cost, because that's where that Title III money's supposed to go, or where I thought, but we gotta make sure they can be paid for, so that money's gotta come from somewhere. So I'm really still concerned where this money's going to come from. That's one of my concerns, okay? I'm still not sure where we're talking about. I'm worried about those children that can't, that they're gonna be lost in the shuffle, and I feel like this whole board should be. We gotta make sure that these children are. The gentleman that made the comment, again, we can't be all things to all people. We've got to remember these three Rs. And I'm scared, we've taken on the magnet program, we're taking on core curriculum, we've taken on, and we're wanting to take on new magnets. We're giving people choices. We're already doing that. You wanna be number ten? We're already doing this. Let's not bite off more than we can chew. We cannot be a supermarket for everybody. And I'm scared we're trying to bite off more than we can chew, and we're not gonna be any good to anybody if we do that. And I think we're trying to do that at the expense of their children, and I'm really, really afraid. And somebody made a perfect example. It was voted down seven to zero a year ago. And why are we trying to cram it back down our throats again a year later? Let's not go too fast for our own good, and who's going to suffer, but it is gonna be the children. And policy was just broken a little while ago. There's people that wanted to speak that could not be able to speak tonight, and I don't appreciate policy being broken to bring people in that were not being able to speak. And I'm going to be quiet, because I could go on and on. Y'all know how I feel about this.
We do, Ms. Carpenter. Thank you for your comments, and let me address the broken policy. I believe the presenter or cabinet-level administrator has some leeway of it in bringing somebody with them to the podium, so, much like Mr. Wickie takes people with him to the podium at a commissioner's meeting or whatnot. So I don't know if somebody called and was allowed to speak, they contacted Ms. Monroe prior to noon on Friday, and if it was afternoon, then they weren't, and that's the board policy. But I do believe Mr. Van Heukle was well within his rights to invite somebody. Now, truth be known, it probably should have been indicated to us that that was gonna take place, but in any event, I don't think we had a broken policy. Mr. Schumaker?
Well, I have a bit of a different viewpoint on this, having a daughter who has worked hard in foreign language and taught other children in foreign languages, in fact, worked here at the Hispanic Learning Center, working with our disadvantaged Hispanic youth to help them not only learn Spanish, but to learn English, doing both things, because they're in a mixed world, and they need a world that provides them both a grounded foundation so that they can communicate with their parents properly, rather than in the language of their parents, because a lot of times that is not the correct language that they should be using, but also in the language of our country, which is English. I fully support, and I'm fully supportive of, English here in this country, and absolutely it should be taught, and it should be taught well. And the problem that I see here is that our children, a lot of them can't even communicate well in English, and they should be able to. A second language does open up the opportunity to investigate the way you speak and the way you communicate in both English and in Spanish. I'm right now only for the Spanish portion, because I wanna see it proven out. The Title III money that you talked about, Ms. Carpenter, is only to support the program costs, not for the actual teachers. And Jason never said he was gonna actually remove the ESL team, he said that would be a process as the program progressed on. So we're talking the first year kindergarten, then next, after that first year, then comes the second year, which would be a first grade. So we're not gonna just be expanding this program all the way through, and I don't think we should go to any other school until we've seen it run its course and see just how effective it is or not effective. But I believe that we need to really keep our eyes on how these children are taken care of. Like she said, thirty-four percent were underperforming, and we need to make sure that that percentage is gonna start going up, and we should be able to start tracking that by the third grade. We should be able to see some definite changes in those percentages in addition to what's going on in that school. Watching my daughter being able to communicate in multiple languages, and not only once she picked up one language, she was able to pick up another language, and her English improved tremendously. When she went to Spain, she taught English, even though she was a Spanish speaker. And she taught English and assisted the Spanish people in Spain, because they have an immersion program, much the same, where they teach, rather than half a day, they teach one day a week or two days a week in English, and then the rest of the week is in Spanish, but there's going back and forth between their course of study, so that they're learning geography and math and all those concepts in both languages, so that they can understand it. It really actually enhances their ability to communicate and understand concepts. I am very supportive of this program, but with the caveat that we really monitor it by starting small, two classes, voluntary only, I think that's where we need to go. I think we need to pull back and watch how we integrate this with the core. You know, starting with kindergarten, the core learning that we've got isn't gonna be really impacted, but as you grow it into the next levels, it's gonna be incumbent upon your group to make sure that our teachers are truly prepared, because now they've gotta integrate two different cores. One is in Spanish, and one is in English. So that's a lot of, that's a lot of work to do, and we need to make sure that that happens.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. I've got just a couple comments, and I guess, Mr. Van Heukle, could you address maybe a second, the question about common core and whether doing this at the same time with that rigorous, it presents any special challenges? Can you comment on that for me, please?
And again, I'll go back to the research around brain research with five-year-olds. And so, yes, we are introducing a new curriculum that is more rigorous. And again, the language is the vehicle by which we're gonna teach the common core. So I don't think you can underestimate the resiliency and the ability of a five-year-old to be immersed in that environment, and you know, the brain researchers just speak so highly of that, and it plays itself out over time. So I have no reservations about students' ability to handle the rigorous standards of the common core in Spanish.
Okay, and the other question that I've had, or one of the concerns, was that we were taking people or students that were not proficient and just throwing in the towel and saying, wow, let's just teach them in Spanish, because we'll just give up. And that, I'm convinced that we're not doing that, but I guess I'd like for you to comment on that as well.
And I'll go back to the comment Darren Roberts, you know, the principal at Fur Elementary made last week, and when you look at the data that you've seen, it's for that very reason that we want to introduce this program, not to throw in the towel, but to actually achieve better results. And back to Mr. Schumaker's point about, you know, learning in that second language develops your linguistic ability across languages. So I have no reservations about that.
Well, I, hold on, if you, yeah, if you've got another comment, I don't mind you doing that, but let me finish. The, I'm convinced, I'm absolutely and utterly convinced that we still live in a world where standardized test scores matter, and when I say standard, I'm not talking about the end of grade or something we're doing at the school. I'm talking about the SAT and the ACT. I know, I've been doing research, I'm right in the middle of it, that there are schools out there that are happy to waive out-of-state tuition to attract bright students that score high on tests and are high academic achievers. We do a lot, and rightfully so, for students that are maybe at the other end of the spectrum. And sometimes, you know, I think we need to look at the higher end of the spectrum. And if we're doing a program that's gonna allow students to pursue higher advanced degrees because they can score better on tests, and they can get scholarships based on these higher scores, then I think it's a pilot that's worth looking at. Again, we've got to have data that it's working. Mr. Harrison mentioned that. We've gotta be able to go back and make sure that we're getting what we're supposed to be getting out of it. Dr. Phillips made a good point, and it's what Ms. Carpenter's been talking about. If there are kids, the English kids that are not, that are falling behind, we can't just leave them behind. But I don't, I don't think this is an either-or. I think this is a program specifically set up to grab some students that will volunteer to be in the program and go from there while we, the staff, I have full confidence, hopefully can get a handle on whatever we're missing on getting these other students up to reading level can take care of. I'm going to mention something, and then I, Ms. Carpenter, if you have another comment. The way the current motion reads, Mr. Board Members, does not specifically say Spanish, and I'm going to ask that our motion specifically say Spanish, because we are not voting on the Chinese program. I don't, I'm not gonna say that it doesn't have board support, because I'm just one person, and we don't need to go up and down the board to do that. But for tonight, the motion that we're going to vote on is Spanish only and is not the Chinese program.
And Mr. Chair, not to interrupt Ms. Carpenter, can we go into some more detail about exactly that motion and that suggestion? Because if we can sever the Chinese portion, to my mind at least, from the Spanish, I'm for the Spanish. I'm for the Spanish. I'll vote for the Spanish. And the data that we get, a year, two years from now, will be consistent, because it will all be about Spanish instruction, as opposed to multiple components. It should be most consistently valid.
I'm gonna let Ms. Carpenter speak. She had a comment, and then we'll work on the wording of the motion.
Yeah, mine is, and where I'm getting kind of, mine is, those children are already out, you know, you're starting this in kindergarten.
Yes, ma'am.
This thirty-four percent I'm referring, they're already past that, and that's where I'm getting the problem. Those children are not going to be involved in this, what we're starting.
Right.
So they're already gone.
And I'm glad.
They're from here out.
Right.
And so you're starting the program here.
Sure.
So they're not gonna be in all your data and everything. So that's why I'm really afraid. They're gonna be out here, and all your data, and all your, all the stuff you're putting, and all these teachers, all this stuff, and that's why I'm really afraid. I'm wanting to make sure you're understanding where I'm coming from, and I'm scared we're putting all our resources and all our stuff into this, and that's why I'm scared. These children are going to be lost.
And, and.
And that's where, you know, we're putting our emphasis here, and so these children are gonna be in the second, the third, and the fourth, and they're gonna be gone.
Yeah.
And they could be English. They, I mean, they could be English students, they could be Spanish. I don't know what the, nobody's told me exactly where they are. We just know, because under that category, that thirty-four something, we're saying, that's all. That's how we had them listed, was all. So I don't know what their breakup is, but I just know they're there. And I, you know, I don't want to make sure that they're not. And, you know, we're saying we're gonna gradually take them, so that's where my problem is. I just wanna make sure they're not.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Before we work on the wording of the motion, I guess what I'm gonna do is ask each board member if they've got any further comment to make. Dr. Phillips, Mr. Harrison?
Just that I'm very proud of it. I've got a master's degree in English, and I have taught it at the community colleges part-time. That doesn't make me a teacher by a long shot. That does not make me any qualified teacher that, you know, is out in the trenches every day. I know that. But I know English, and as Mr. Phillips, Dr. Phillips mentioned, I know the frequency of remediation that's necessary for students who get into my classes, or who somehow get there and just don't get it. But I'm hoping that an emphasis on Spanish instruction for English speakers and Spanish-English instruction for English as a second language populations will improve their academic performance, and as you say, the synapses going off in their brains, so that they get it and do better and are more competent and, I mean, that is a positive, but more capable of language acquisition.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter?
I don't have any more questions on that, per se, but I think for going forward, if we're gonna have a proposal that we're voting on in a week's time to allow the public to input, it's probably not enough. I think we, if we're gonna do something, we propose it, and then the following month, we vote on it. Because I think there's a perception there that some folks did not get the opportunity to speak, and I think they all are entitled to have that opportunity.
Mr. Schumaker?
Before I speak, I'd like Mariko to give us some points, if that's all right, since she is gonna actually work at Fur and has a little bit of a teacher's ear there.
she is going to actually work at Fur and has a little bit of a teacher's ear there.
Absolutely.
I've actually thought a lot about this. It's hard, because I sit here, and I kind of represent two perspectives. I see it through the child's eye, maybe three, from a parent and as a teacher. I think because it's a choice right now, and I see parents that are here to support it, I stand neutral, because my child's not going into this program. When I see it from a parent who wants it for their child, that's the only way I can see it. And hopefully, these children will benefit from a program like this. It's kind of hard. I came from Fairfax County Schools in Virginia. I know they were implementing some type of immersion. I don't think it was a splash program, but I know it's still happening. And I don't know the data. I don't know if it's doing well. I know it's still happening over there, so we can only hope that it works. I think it's good to look at it and see if it's working a year from now, but by looking at the parents that are actually here and wanting this for their children, that's evidence right there that there's someone who wants this for their child. So, I can't really say yes or no. I, I have to stand neutral. I think that's the best thing for me to do, especially since I do work at Fur, but I also represent other teachers in the county, so that's just how I, how I see it.
Great. Thank you, Mariko. Mr. Schumaker?
I look at this as a twelve-year journey for a family that decides to put their children into this program. That's if we, if it really shows the types of results. The children that participate in this will have a lot of opportunities that probably many other children in this county would never, ever have. This is not a magnet, but it's akin to a magnet-style program like a STEM, because, again, it's a twelve-year journey. A lot of children are going to be starting this STEM program out from kindergarten and working their way up, if they go to Coltrane Web and, and on. And so, they'll have the benefit of going through this whole problem-based learning, where the other process is immersion in two different languages and learning the core through two different sets of eyes, and that will enhance their capabilities. I feel like if a parent wants to, to endure this, and wants to really work with their children, they'll get something out of it. The other, other piece that we really can't even put, put our, our money on, or, is the piece that deals with the youth that are kind of outside of our community a little bit. The Hispanic youth here will be reached out to in a different way. If they happen to participate in the program, I see as bridging some gaps and creating some unity, not only among the youth in the school, but among the parents of the youth, because there will be an opportunity to, to bridge something and to draw our community much tighter together. I am about this community supporting itself and supporting each other. I feel this is just one method. I think the STEM is another method, and the IB is another method. All of these are ways that we can integrate into our community and draw us tighter together, because this community needs to be tight and support itself, and to really win itself over. Jason, you've got a real chore ahead of you in integrating the Common Core into the Spanish process. And so, we will really want to understand and get feedback on how you're performing on this, if, if we, if we are able to pass it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker.
Can I make a bet?
Times of charm.
Can I make, make a bet with you now? I'm going to tell you, they're going to tell you the scores are going to go down, and I'll make you a bet with you, because I'll tell you, I'll make a bet with you now, I'll make a wager with you, because they're going to say, "All the, all the scores are going to go down in the state," and that's going to be the excuse.
Well, we'll, I guess we'll save that conversation for another day. Board members, we, we, we need to put in front of us a motion for the Splash Immersion Program. I'm of the opinion, and, and I guess I'll ask Mark if, the way the motion's written on our agenda, that if we just add the word "Spanish" after Splash, that that would take care of it, and we would be, not be voting for the, the Chinese portion.
I, I think that's right. You could clarify that. I think the 2013 program is the Spanish, 2014 is the Chinese program, so if you want to say Spanish, or 2013 Spanish, you can clarify that that's what you're acting on.
Why don't we do both, just to make sure we nail it home?
All right. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May, may we add to that, that it would be at Fur, and we would limit it to Fur at this point, and then if we want to expand it beyond that, then we would, we would do so later on?
I don't see any reason not to do that. Is there something I'm not?
No, I think you can do that. The written proposal is just for Fur, in other words, the attachment, but I think making the motion that way to make it explicit is probably a good idea.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm going to ask for a motion that the 2013 Splash Spanish Language Immersion Program be implemented at Carl, Carl a Fur Elementary School as presented. Does that cover what we're doing? Okay.
Second.
We need a motion first.
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Monroe, let the vote show five to one in favor. Okay, board members? We'll move on to number, excuse me, nine point two. Approval of a Resolution Opposing County Transfer. And this is from a discussion item that we had last week on action from the North Carolina School Board Association. And any further comment that we have on that? I will start with Mr. Schumaker.
Well, I've thought about this, and I don't, really don't understand, except, you know, at least in our situation, why this would, why we would need, our commissioners would want to take, take on this. Like Jeff said last week, Dr. Phillips said last week was, "I'd rather be an owner than a renter." Having them over the facilities and doing that type of business would actually deter their focus, and have them focusing on things that probably they're not equipped to do, and would take up more of their time, and I don't think would be in their best interest, and also would defeat the purpose of us being voted into our positions, since our job is to look at the total picture, not only our students and our faculty, and our, and our, and our transportation, and the children of our county. We're also to look at how they're educated and what kind of facilities we provide them, and I believe that we have a much more unified approach and a much better approach than having it broken away, as is suggested by this resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
And, you know, we've been working with them, and we have in our thing that we have an agreement right now that they have first option when we give the, you know, when we don't use a building. We've got a, a real good relationship and have had one. And, yeah, there's, there's all kinds of laws that's been put in place. And so, I, you know, I think that we should stick our, stick by our guns. Like I mentioned last week, we got our job, they've got theirs, and then we've got things in place that we, it, it kind of weighs together. When I, what I mean by that is they provide the money, we give them what we need, we know what we need in our schools, so it kind of balances itself out. If we ever had a tax, if we ever decided on tax and authority, you know, that would be a different, a whole different thing.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. And you have the unique perspective of having worn both hats, so I appreciate your comments. Mr. Walter?
Yeah. The concept I understand, just having to do a resolution, I don't think it really makes a lot of sense for us. This is a Wake County issue, or at least it seems to be, was generated. And then there, I guess the agenda for the county commissioners, state association, has it listed, but doesn't have any information exactly, background on that. I think if we're going to do something, we wait until we have the specifics. That's just my opinion. Still, it's, it's all that.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Harrison?
I guess I just still need some clarification on this. I'm trying to think of a local example, and I don't mean to mix apples and oranges, to fall back on the cliche, but when the Old Bethel School, the ownership of the property was debated and discussed in past years, the ownership of that property reverted to the county. And at some point, the school system, Cabarrus County Schools, had no say-so in the disposition of, of that. Now, again, maybe that's unrelated to this resolution, but it seems to be the back end of ownership of and construction of, or demolition of, for that matter.
Yeah. Mark, you may can comment further on that. I, I think that...
I think we're confusing.
I want a holistic kind of answer about who owns and who constructs or destroys former school property, or property that potentially has school usage.
For, for provisions where we no longer need the property, the county has what's called a right of first refusal. So, I think if we're, if we're not going to use a property, we have to give the county an opportunity to acquire it at fair market value or a negotiated price before it goes elsewhere. So, it doesn't revert to the county, but they do have that right to say, "We want to acquire it and use it first."
So, then please, how is this resolution, maybe, maybe, again, not relevant, but in, in that context, can you help me get my brain around the resolution?
Well, I guess, well, let me try to take a stab at that. The resolution is more to, to tell the, the Association of County Commissioners through our lobbying board, the North Carolina School Board Association, that what, the, the pending request from the commissioners in Wake County to the legislature, that we as a board oppose. We're telling the North Carolina State School Board Association that we would oppose that here, but we're just trying to be one of 115 LEAs to let that voice be known. There are certain circumstances, such as the Old Bethel, where property here in our county that has been under our jurisdiction would revert back to our commissioners, and we, you know, that, that's, I guess, can be done on some sort of case-by-case basis, or however we seem fit to take care of things here in our jurisdiction. But what we're voting on here is just at, at the state level, that as a blanket statement, we oppose transferring all facilities, maintenance, repair, ownership to county commissioners. We want to retain that for ourselves. Does that help at all?
I think it is. I guess the other thing I would add is, when you're at the end, like with Old Bethel, there's actually a finding you no longer need the property for educational purposes, which I think is consistent with the current statutory structure, which says the school board's the one who decides where you're going to build a building, what kind of building you're going to put in. Right now, those, those are given to this board. It's not the county commissioners to say, "You should put it there, and it should be two stories, and it should be made of brick." Those are school board decisions. I do think the current proposal from the county commissioners would potentially change that. In other words, they're, they're asking for counties to be able to say, "We'll tell you where to put the school, and how, what it'll look like, and how it should be." And that's what the School Board Association is opposed to. And I, and I guess my view as your school lawyer would be in agreement with the resolution. In other words, I do think it's prob, it could be problematic, not that our county commissioners have expressed a desire to do it, but I could foresee a situation where they say, "Well, we think the school is going to go over here," and we could be in an awkward situation, where they're telling us where to build and what to build, but we're supposed to run it. It's our job to make sure that the kids are getting properly oriented. Those are your really, your decisions to make, I think, budget-wise, so. But I think that's the issue. Who should be, who should, should the county have the power to say, "We're going to build schools directly," as opposed to right now, where they give us the money, but we make those decisions?
And then that's a very good clarification, because as much as I want to absolutely, thousand percent of the time, cooperate with our county commissioners, I understand that what this resolution is about could be, it could have statewide ramifications, but I don't like to use the word "power" that we have, but we do have, share that responsibility with our county commissioners here, yet have to be protective of our responsibilities. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr., Dr. Phillips?
Yeah, actually, my, my father was a college professor, and he was Dr. Phillips. I'm his son, Jeff, but even though I have a PhD, so you can call me Jeff, it's, it's all right. What I was going to say was, I, I think here in Cabarrus County, our commissioners have really already addressed one of the, the key issues that you would have in, in terms of the school board owning, or the schools owning a school property. And that's that, you know, we, when times are tight, you're going to lean towards trying to keep existing programs going and keeping teachers in the schools, and maybe you cut corners on maintenance. And, and I, I lived in a, a town in Massachusetts where exactly that thing happened, and, and schools were just wearing out way before they should. But what they did here in Cabarrus County, and I think it was about eight to 10 years ago, was that the county commissioner said, "When we give you money, a certain allotment of it has to go into maintenance, and you cannot transfer that money out for education programs." And so, that's their way of ensuring that we keep good care of the assets that they helped us build with the tax money that they raised. And so, I think that, you know, this is a non-issue here in Cabarrus County, but, but I am worried that, that it may open up unwanted consequences, as I alluded to last week. You know, it, it says that the county commissioners will be the, you know, will own and maintain all public school buildings. Well, charter schools are also public school buildings, and so I think that this could open up new avenues for, for, for paying for charter schools that I don't really think is intended in this, but, but it could allow that to happen. So, that's why I'm inclined to vote against this.
Thank you, Jeff. I, I guess I want to make one small clarification to make sure that, that we, I don't know of any intent by our current commissioners to do anything different than what we're currently doing. So, this, again, is at a different level. This is at a statewide level. So, okay. Board members, I'll entertain a motion for, that the resolution opposing county transfer of school facilities, as recommended by the North Carolina School Board Association, be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Ms. Monroe, that's six to zero. Okay, board members, well done. Let's, I need a motion that the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor going into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session. Thank you all for coming. Good night, and I thank you.